Okay, your line.
Okay, um, agenda for Tuesday, July 21st at, uh, 2020, 6 o'clock PM. The agenda packet is posted at the Planning Department's office and at www.riverbank.org. Uh, we'll go ahead and call to order.
Thank you. So Chair Fenrich here. Uh, Vice Chair Stewart here. Commissioner Dineen is having technical difficulties at the moment. Commissioner Link.
Here.
Commissioner Abasso here. And our alternate Commissioner Rubin.
Here.
Okay. All right, uh, comments can be sent via email to d20@riverbank.org or call 209-863-7172 or other platforms posted in the subject line indicate number one public comments. Um, conflict of interest, any planning commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Sounds like none. Okay, uh, public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board. All right, any public comments? Doesn't sound like it. All right, moving on to consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the Planning Commission Board.
Listen, John's back on, sorry to interrupt.
Okay, item 2.1 of the consent calendar posting of the agenda. The agenda for the July 21st, 2020 Planning Commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center Bulletin Board, City Hall North and South Bulletin Boards, the Post Office, the city website, and emailed to the library on July 15th, 2020. In addition, we had posted the public notice along with the staff report and documents for item 3.1 on this website. Oh, sorry, for item 3.1 on this website on May 6th, 2020.
It looks like, I'm sorry, that must have, that's supposed to have been taken off, sorry.
Should I, should I?
Yeah, just, yeah, just continue.
For the public to have additional time to review and comment due to the current conditions. Right, and item 2.2, approval of the July 21st, 2020 agenda. This provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission or staff to recommend that an item be placed on the agenda for discussion or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order.
Move for approval.
I second that.
Is that, um, who's that?
Steve Link, second through.
Okay, thank you. I can't hear you, so, or see you, so, okay. Link, uh, okay, got it.
All right, uh, Planning Commission Public Hearings. The public notice for item 3.1 was published in the Riverbank News on May 6th, 2020. The 300-foot property owner notice of the public hearing was mailed out via U- US Postal Service May 6th, 2020. So item 3.1, project description, architecture and site plan review number 02-2020 slash department file number 20-0020, Countryside 1 and 2. The project consists of architecture and site plan review for Countryside 1 and 2, 49 and 45 single-family residential detached units with a park and a basin and associated street sewer water and storm drainage improvements. Project location is the southwest corner of Central and California Avenue, APN 062-022-003 and between Claws Road and Central Avenue, APN 062-022-009 and APN 062-022-022. Site plan design review is required for the new residential units. The proposed project will not have a significant effect on the environment and is categorically exempt under Article 19, Section 332, Class 32, Infield Development Projects Pursuant to CECL guidelines.
Gabrielle, did you share my PowerPoint?
Yes, it's there. Can everyone see it?
I can, I could, okay, I can see it, but then I won't have any control of moving it forward.
Okay.
So, uh, you want to go to the next screen? Okay. So, um, like she said, this was, is the architecture and site plan review of Countryside 1 and 2. Countryside 1 is the lightly colored, uh, square in the middle of the, uh, in the middle of the picture and then Countryside 2 is the, uh, rectangle, uh, right beneath it. As you can see, there is, uh, the high school is directly north of here. Um, you can see the, um, the outdoor track. Uh, you can see some ranchettes. Um, unfortunately, this aerial does not contain the, um, Riverbank, uh, central apartments, uh, but that is that, um, green rectangle there right above the blue.
Donna, can I interrupt really quick?
Yes.
Sorry, I just, I'm looking at this map and it's on the wrong parcel.
On the wrong parcel.
So Countryside 1 should be in line with the?
Oh, you're absolutely right. We have to jump over one square. I apologize. So, uh, can you see my cursor? No.
Yeah.
Probably not. Uh, Gabrielle, could you put your cursor?
You're good.
Over to the left. More? More, right there. That should be Countryside 1. My apologies.
Okay, so the, the model's green one there, all the way on the left of the screen?
Correct, the big, large, green square and then the rectangle beneath it and then beneath that rectangle, you can see, uh, like a go-kart or a mini bike trail. That's what those squiggly lines are right there.
Directly below, called Diamond.
Correct, yes.
Yes. All right, thank you. Next slide.
Hold on, bear with me, some technical difficulties. Let me, let me go on to the next slide.
Well, if you pull out, I could share my screen and then I could just run through them.
Okay, let me, um, all right. Okay, Donna, you should be able to share now. You want to go give it a try?
There you go.
All right, go for it.
Okay, trying to get it. Now it's not going to the, uh, oh, there we go. Can you see it? Okay. Okay, there you go. Okay, so there's approximately 88 single-family residences known as Countryside 1 and 2. Even though Countryside 1 is, uh, moving forward independently from Countryside 2, uh, we're doing the architecture review of the houses for both projects. So the original map was approved in 2005. It was tentative map 072004, which was 88 lots on 18.74 acres. And then the next year, the project was broken up into Phase 1 and Phase 2. Countryside 1 is actually Phase 2. So we have a development agreement with Countryside 1 that was recorded in 2017 and that lays out the, um, obligations, um, and responsibilities of both the developer and of the city. Um, Countryside 2, we worked on a development agreement and Chris Hayes at the time signed that document. But unfortunately, um, he passed and the document was not recorded. So this is a map of Countryside 1 at the top. You can see the streets in blue. We have, um, uh, California at the top and we have Central here and then these are some internal streets around a park. Uh, Countryside 2. And this exhibit is because, uh, Countryside 1 is getting a final map and so, uh, we have a lot of exhibits that have this, um, lined out on it. But Countryside 2 is still being worked on as far as a couple little changes to its map. But this is how they play out together. You would come in off of Central. You could go through Countryside 1 and the Countryside 2, either come back out on Central or go out to Claws. So the, um, houses range in size from a little over 1,700 square feet to 2,100 square feet. They were all single-story, which is nice because people can age in place. If they decide to purchase this home and then stay in it, um, until they retire and then pass retirement, uh, they don't have the stairs and a lot of, uh, features that makes two-story houses difficult for seniors. So there are four different floor plans and there are three variations, which they call cottage, farmhouse, and craftsman. And there are 11 color schemes. So what the developer does is when he lays out his map, he'll put houses on the different parcels and then assign, um, color schemes to them. So if somebody comes in, for example, and wants a Plan 1, uh, they can locate it on the map and there'll be several scattered throughout the, um, subdivision. So we try to keep the houses that look kind of similar further apart. So with the, um, four floor plans, the three variations and the 11 color schemes, we can get a really nice looking neighborhood. So rather than go through all those different combinations, I chose, this is Plan 1 and Elevation A. So you can see the roof detail here, uh, the garage door, uh, there's a nice little entryway. And what's really important too is you've got this window here that provides eyes on the street for greater security in the neighborhood. This one is Plan 2 and Elevation B. You can see the roof is slightly different. The garage door has been changed. You don't have the, uh, architecture framing this window. You have nice shutters here and some really nice, um, rock, um, veneer or, uh, rock on there, uh, touches. This is Plan 3, Elevation C. Uh, this part looks a little bit similar to the last one, but again, we've got different garage doors, a different roof, different roofing materials and colors. Colors, uh, make a big difference in the neighborhood. And this is Plan 4 and I went back to Elevation A. So you can see the roof detailing like the first plan that we looked at. But it doesn't have the, the same architecture here. It's got slightly different doors. So they can really take and mix and match these different elevations and variations, uh, to, to get a nice mix in there. So as far as CECL goes, um, we don't need to have CECL because CECL was done on the tentative subdivision map and all we're doing is looking at the architecture of the houses. So that won't be any sort of environmental impact. And the recommendation is to approve the architectural and site plan review. If any of you had gone out to the site, you might have seen some construction going on there already. And what that's all about is in order to have a final map and be able to sell the houses, the developer has to either put in all the infrastructure and get it accepted by the city or bond for it or a combination of both. So he's working on the infrastructure for the final map for Countryside 1. And there are a couple of houses that have already been, um, put into production on Central. The development agreement for the developer states that, um, model houses, um, other houses can be constructed, but it's at the, um, developer's own risk. Um, I, let's see, I think that's all I have for the moment. Um, we do have the developer, uh, with us, so if there's some questions that you have for me or for them, we'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Yes.
I, I, I'm assuming I know the answer, but there will be versions of these homes as well, like flip-flop, where the garage door's on the left side of the house instead of the right. Alternate those?
Yes, correct.
Yes, the, the developer does have to do that and where that comes in handy is if, you know, you don't want driveways too close to a corner, for example, so they would have the ability to flip the house and get the driveway further away from the curb or from the corner.
Standard practice. I was just making sure that that's what I was seeing here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. Um, the, the side and rear elevations, do the windows and, um, any sort of door openings get enhanced elevations when you can see, see them from the road? Is that an option in the conditions of approval?
Normally, uh, we reserve that for two-story houses. Uh, generally the six-foot fence and then the distance of the backyard would keep you from seeing much of the architecture of a one-story house.
Okay. And then, um, maybe I missed this, but, so it's, it's zoned PD. I don't know if I caught why it was zoned PD rather than, than just, um, low-density residential. Is there? I, I just didn't catch what, maybe what the PD's for or why it's PD.
That's a good question. It's, it's been zoned PD for, um, actually quite some time. Um, that's, I'm not sure.
Okay. It wasn't for projects to be like small.
Mark, Mark, are the lots 5,000 square feet?
Lots, uh, yeah, the minimum size is five and there's some that go up, I think, well, Phase 2 especially because you've got some cul-de-sac go up to, I think, in excess of six. You know, when that was zoned, I mean, that was well before our time, uh, probably back, I'm going to guess the zone would have placed 3. I mean, when that first map was approved, I think it was 105. So the pride, but I'm just guessing, but by the time it went, I have no idea what people were thinking about at that point. But that was 15 to 17.
Yeah, she's probably correct. Since it's 5,000 square foot lots minimum and our minimum is 6,000 square foot lots, that would be a relaxation of one of the development standards.
Yeah, we didn't change the lots. Uh, I mean, we basically inherited this, so that, yes, probably would have.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, so.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mike, can you give us some sort of an idea what type of landscaping is planned?
Um, yeah, you, we're to a large degree anymore, which, you know, depending on your point of view, is a good or a bad thing. The state of California has so many mandates regarding the drought, um, it's so, or drought tolerant. Um, what we did on, on Diamond Bar, uh, West, your brother project, or what we did on California States would be very similar to what, uh, this is going to look like as well, our style.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions from the commissioners? Okay, are there any more questions from the commissioners? Guess not. Um, let's see here. I get this part mixed up a little bit, but now is it, um, can the public?
Yeah, open to the public hearing.
Public hearing, okay.
Yes.
I would like to mention that while we're waiting to hear if anybody calls in or emails in, we did not receive any comments, uh, by email by 5 o'clock today, and I received no comments by telephone by 5 o'clock today.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we hear you.
Okay, I apologize for the late entry. I think I brought my technology straight now.
Commissioners, I just want to let you know we have a delay in our YouTube. It's about a minute. And on Charter Channel, it's about maybe two or three seconds.
I haven't received any emails yet.
Nothing on my end either. Hey, you want to call it good?
Okay. All right, um, let's see here. Recommendation, approval of resolution number 2020-006 to recommend approval of the architectural review by roll call vote.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan review for Countryside. Steve Link here.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Was that Joan?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, let me do roll call. So we have Chair?
Yes.
So Chair Fenrich?
Yes.
Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Dinen?
Yes.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
And Commissioner Abasso?
Yes.
All right. It's approved, just passes, five votes.
All right, and I guess I just keep going through the agenda here?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Planning Commission Presentation, information only.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, and then Planning Commission Comments. Do we have any?
None for me.
All right. Move on, County Referrals slash Correspondence slash Information, information only, no action. Um, looks like none of this. Uh, Staff Comments.
Um, at the last City Council meeting that I attended by Zoom, the, uh, project that I presented was, uh, an amendment to Chapter 120 of our zoning, uh, not our zoning code, our municipal code, which deals with the cultivation of cannabis. When we drafted the original ordinance and looked at the penalties, we were thinking about the homeowner. You know, if we had a homeowner who was growing cannabis and they had two or three plants or 10 plants more than they should have, then the, um, the penalty that we used was a $250 fine. So they would need to have a, they would get the $250 fine and they would have to remove the excess number of plants. But what we didn't think of at the time was that somebody might move into one of our residential neighborhoods and put in a couple hundred plants. So it doesn't really make sense and it's not really an incentive not to do that if somebody's only going to charge you a $250 fine because they're making a million, who knows how much money on selling the cannabis. And a $250 fine, a $250 fine doesn't really stop that. So the City of Patterson had changed the fines within their ordinance. And so I got that from NUBIA and we added it into our, um, code. So now, um, going past the homeowner that has just a couple of small plants, but addressing these large illegal grows. Now, if you were to be, um, arrested by the Sheriff's Department for that, not arrested, excuse me, but if you were, um, if the sheriff came to your house and you had about, say, let's just say 200 plants, then you would be fined $1,000 a plant. So that should be enough to have these illegal growers think about coming to our city. If they were to purchase a house and then grow all these plants and they were found out and we were to find them, maybe, you know, $100,000, $200,000, we could actually lien the property. So that might be enough of an incentive to get people to look elsewhere to do those type of illegal activities. So the City Council did approve the first reading to change that from $250 an incident to $1,000 a plant. And next Tuesday at 6:00 PM will be the second reading of that ordinance amendment. Then 30 days after that, that would become law and, um, any, uh, illegal grows that are busted after that point, we would be able to use the new fine structure. And that's the only item I had at the last council meeting.
All right, thank you, Donna. Um, adjournment. The next regular Planning Commission meeting is set for August 18th, uh, 2020 at 6:00 PM.
Right now, we're looking at one item, um, that we're working towards, so, uh, hope to see you then.
All right, uh, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.